My name is Keith Romano. I like to call this meeting by your order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the Town of Monroe. It is Wednesday, the fourteenth of June, and the time is 7:06 PM. Will everyone please stand for recite the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, our God, and liberty and justice for all.
For the roll call, the members of the commission is staff present during tonight's meeting. The members are here, present, starting myself, Keith Romano, chairman, Eric Lindstrom, vice chair.
Here.
B.J. Hall, secretary.
Here.
Jim Stewart is not with us. Ross Masaraco.
Here.
Brian Kelly, not with us. Rick Schultz, planning and zoning administrator.
Present.
Cheryl Valleys, planning and zoning and inland wetlands enforcement officer.
Present.
Sarah Strad, recording secretary.
Here.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, we also have James, the Newtown engineer. James, can you say hi to the commission so they know who you are?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm James DeMao. I'm the Newtown engineer.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you all as well.
Joining us. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Meeting Procedure. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance of State Law Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance of state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that the applicant keep their presentation as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro in opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a timeline of three minutes may be imposed. It's not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. This meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. This is now the general public participation. Is there anybody here, either president of the chambers or on the line that would like to speak to this commission in a general nature about wetlands related matter that is not either going to be before us tonight or in the near future? All right, regulated activities, public hearing. Application hearing determination determine the type of hearing. Using my laptop here, so. Do it. Okay. All right, so first on the list, we have IWC 2023-03, file number 1439, 4139141, and 201 Turkey Roost Road, and 30 Cobblers Hill Court. To propose construction of 99 single family detached dwellings served by a community wastewater treatment system would propose regulated activities in the upwind review area. Quarry Ridge Associates LLC, J. Edwards and Associates LLC. The applicant requested a automatic public hearing. We'll get to that later, so.
Mr. Chairman, pertaining to the applicant's request to forego the hearing determination and start the public hearing tonight on June 14th, 2023 for application IWC 2023-13, file 1439 Quarry Ridge for 99 detached single family development located within the multifamily residence district located at 139141 and 201 Turkey Roost Road, and thirdly Cobblers Hill Court. Staff is recommending that the inland wetlands commission deny the request for opening the public hearing tonight and schedule the public hearing on June 28th or other date as determined by the commission. Staff is recommending the rejection because of the review that is ongoing and we need the additional time. So it is up to the commission. We consulted with special counsel. The commission can say yes and continue with the public hearing tonight. They have fulfilled all the public hearing requirements, or you can deny the request, and that would require a motion second and a roll call and then schedule a public hearing, and we are recommending no sooner than June 28th.
Okay. Where are we with? So you say you still have a little bit more work to do. You'd rather have a little bit more time to make sure we have all of our.
Yes, and also tonight, you're going to be asking the applicant or his representative if they will agree to the third route, third personal review.
Right.
As you did in the past.
Okay.
So that will take additional time, too.
Right.
We'd like to have all these reports in order at the time of the opening of the public hearing, so it would be a more meaningful public hearing, both for the applicant and for the public.
Right. All right, so we need a motion to deny that request so we can proceed.
If that is the will of the commission.
Right. I move that we deny. I move forward.
All right, well, you need to second it, Russ, so.
No, I prefer to just keep it going.
No, but I mean, you need to vote on it. So you make the second, and then you'll say nay.
Okay, I make the second, and I say nay.
And then you'll take the roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. B.J.
I vote yes.
I vote no. I vote yes.
Okay. Majority carries, so it is denied. Mr. Chairman, the next step is scheduling a public hearing. So if the members could look at their calendar, June 28th is the fourth Wednesday.
Right. June 28th doesn't work for me. I don't know if it works for others.
It'd be imperative, Mr. Chairman, that you attend.
Yeah, so I will be out of town that day, so how about July 12th?
Does that work for all the other commissioners? That'll be at 7:00 PM, and that will be a standalone meeting for that one applicant application.
Okay.
So for the members of the audience that are here, for the Quarry Ridge.
Yeah.
The public hearing will open on July 12th.
Chair, for the reference, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzi LLC, offices at Texasco Hill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Is there another date besides July 12th our engineer won't be available for that date?
Mr. Chairman.
What would our next scheduled meeting be after that?
Seventeenth and twenty.
Twenty, I'll look right now. I think it's the 26th. Twenty-sixth is the next scheduled on the agenda, on the calendar.
Right.
Unless you want a standalone meeting, like the 19th.
I know there's some question about getting this done before a 65-day window, so let's see what they have to say about that.
Well, yeah, I think the second, the July 26th, I think is beyond the 65-day window. So I think the 19th. If it was, the 19th was available, you could do that.
Yeah, that's your law, what is. So the 19th, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, does that work?
I think it works.
July 19th?
Not for me.
Okay.
So we're kind of stuck here, huh?
You know, I mean, this was one of the reasons we thought it would be good to open the hearing, because then we, you know, we could, then it would be opened and we wouldn't have that restriction from a time perspective.
Right.
Well, we can pick other dates. What dates? Can you throw out some dates for the commission?
How far beyond the 65 days?
Yeah, that's a non-issue, Mr. Chairman. What about the 13th? July?
20th?
That is.
That's a Thursday.
Thursday, that's in planning and zoning. We may be meeting twice.
Okay.
The 11th? The 18th?
The 18th.
Tuesday, Mr. Chairman, the 18th? B.J.?
The 18th.
That week is out.
I will be unavailable after the 14th.
All right, so can we work on the 11th? Or the 13th?
13th doesn't, when's the PNC meeting? The 11th, does that work?
It's okay for me.
Yeah. If I could suggest, if we opened the hearing at the 28th, but did not present at the 28th, we could then continue it to the second July hearing.
We weren't planning to hold this meeting.
We open on June 28th.
If we open it on June 28th, even if we're not there, but we'll just continue it automatically, but then we've stopped the timeframe, we've opened it, and that would carry us through to the July meeting, the one that's the second.
Yeah, that is an option.
If that's.
If that's okay, if he can open it and.
Agree to open and continue it.
Yeah. Accuse himself by.
No, we'll have, I mean, you won't be present, right?
Not on the 28th.
No, the next officer is B.J. He'll be here.
I'll be here.
So B.J. will be the acting chairman.
Okay, sorry. That works.
Yeah, so we'll read the call of the hearing.
That's fine.
And then continue it.
Okay.
So for the benefit of the audience that's here, June 28th, 7:00 PM, the hearing will open, and then it will be automatically continued to the next date to be determined.
Sir.
Address the chairman.
Okay, excuse me. So, Mr. Chairman, so nothing will happen that day. The public doesn't need to be there then by June 28th?
And it's just a procedural step in order to not have this expire, so there'll be no discussion that day.
Okay. And how will we know when the new date is for the?
Yeah, staff can inform you. You can call us.
Okay, call the town hall.
Yeah, please.
Would anything be available to the public as far as presentation before the meeting, or is it not going to tell the meeting?
The application has been uploaded and is available as an exhibit to review. When applications come in, we upload it and you can review it online.
Thank you.
And staff reports will also be done, so they'll be uploaded.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so just to recap, we're going to have, we're going to open on the 28th of June immediately postponed.
Yep, continue it to a date to be determined.
Right. And then we'll let everybody know what that date is going to be.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, we have one more item pertaining to this application on the peer review.
Right, that was an independent review.
Yeah. Pertaining to the selection of an independent consultant for the review, analysis, and report for application 2023-13, file 1439 Quarry Ridge. In accordance with Section 810 of the Monroe Wetlands and Watercourses regs and agreed upon by the applicant, we need you to state that. And as recommended by the Southwest Conservation District, we have forwarded a referral to the Southwest, and they are recommending a third-party review, and if you can select Arcadis, that would be prudent insofar as they're aware of the property and the substance. The Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission would authorize the inland wetlands agent to enter into agreement with the services of Arcadis as the consultant for the third-party review to perform the following work: to analyze all data provided by the applicant, two, to determine the environmental impact, three, to determine if any feasible and prudent alternatives are available, four, to review the proposed sediment and erosion control measures, and five, to determine potential impacts of the proposed regulated activities on wetlands and watercourses. Furthermore, it is recommended to advise the town council on the selection of Arcadis as the consultant for the review of said application, Quarry Ridge, in an amount not to exceed $8,500. That was agreed upon at the last submission. So it's important for the applicant to agree to the payment, and then a motion and a second is in order, Mr. Chairman, and then a roll call vote.
Okay. Chairman, Commissioners, Chris Russo again, Russo and Rizzi LLC. We are happy to agree to the third-party review. We welcome it. We're very confident in the application.
And the payment.
And the payment, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we ask for the third party.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion passes.
And roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Masaraco, you already said yes, but.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, three yeses, yes.
Okay, that's enough for that application.
Okay. Around the IWC 2018-07A1205 Monroe Turnpike, Collin Plaza, modification to increase proposed retail structure by 2,052 square feet, reduce impervious surface area, modify parking and drainage plan to reduce peak outflow.
Mr. Chairman, this application came before you in 2018 to construct two new commercial buildings with associated parking drainage improvements and buffer plantings adjacent to two wetland pockets. The applicant is now requesting to increase the size of one of the structures, but reduce impervious surface by 0.09 acres and modify the drainage to reduce peak flows. There's no proposed change to the limit of disturbance or landscape plan, and this is before you right now to see if the commission believes there's no significant impact resulting from proposed changes. If so, the staff asks that the commission authorize the inland wetland agent to approve the plans at a staff level or make a determination that they'd like to see the modification go to the full commission for an application before you. And there is a rep from Solly here if you have any specific questions regarding modifications.
This is, this was approved in 2018? Didn't they come, weren't they back at us once before? Because I wasn't on in 2018, but this is where Panera Bread and all that is, right?
It's behind.
Behind.
And that's behind that.
Yeah, there's two buildings left now.
Right. But I remember being in front of us.
Yeah, there's, there's been.
But that was, that was after 2018, so was there?
Yeah, before show came, there was another amendment, and this is in line with the new Aldi building and the medical office building.
Right, so there was an approval before.
Yes.
I saw, and so there was another application, so we're amending the older application?
That's the one that we requested, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure because I know that was here for another approval afterwards.
Asking, can you do it, agent? Who do you want for full commission?
And if you have any further questions, it can go either way, but.
Yes, right.
What do we think? I haven't seen this, so I don't know anything about it. That's right. That was it, before your time. Yeah.
I just, in the staff packet that I gave you, I handed out the site overlay plans, so they were original plans. Previously approved as in red, and then the darker one is the proposed changes, so it just shows you the modification overlay. That was in the packet, so.
The proposed wall is in the same location previously approved, and all of the plantings on the lower half, closer to the wetlands are remaining as previously approved.
Yeah.
For Roger, Matt Paulino, Solly Engineering.
Thank you. So all the red is changes?
No, the red is the previously approved, and then anything that comes through dark would be the proposed modification, so all within the upper limits of the retained.
Okay, you want to reiterate the net reduction?
This is the net reduction in the impervious area as well as a reduction in peak flows at the discharge in all of the storm events as well.
Now that we have a town engineer.
James is here. James has reviewed it. Do you have any questions for James?
What do you think?
I don't feel we need to.
Cheryl, do you think this needs to come to us, or let that staff deal with it?
Let's staff take care of it.
All right, so I'll make a vote. Make a motion. Right, motion and vote, right?
Yes, motion and second roll call.
I'll make a motion to. A motion to Commissioner Lindstrom to.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hall to allow staff to deal with the modification to this plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Very good meetings, no public input. Yeah, IWC 2022-06A1, file number 141053, Whispering High Road, and a permanent modification to the revised grade.
Mr. Chairman, this came before your commission on April 12th last, where the commission looked at the proposed revised grading plan and made suggestions to the applicant that they do three things, which were revise the grading plan to a three-to-one slope within 25 feet of the wetlands, install a conservation seed mix to stabilize the slope, and make sure that the, all the plantings are installed at the toe of the slope adjacent to the wetlands. And the commission, the applicant has provided such plans, and they've been submitted to you in your packets, and so if the commission's okay with it, we have a draft resolution that just allows for that modification of the plans.
Read that into record.
Sure. So it would be IWC-2020-06A1, file 141053 Whispering Highs Road, Kana, modifications. Amendment of approval dated June 14th, 2023, as the Monroe Inland Wetland Commission has considered an application by Leontina Cassis, a black firm landscape architect, for proposed modifications to include the removal of fill along wetland border includes the creation of new three-to-one slope with 25 foot, within the 25 feet of the wetlands, relocation of plantings along the wetland line, and plan to stabilize the slope. Commission received the following application submissions: revised site plans entitled Proposed Yard Improvements Sheets 2.11, 2.61, and 3.01 by Solly Engineering dated revised May 17th, 2023. As the, upon considering the above-listed submission data and respective testimony at a duly noticed meeting on April 12th, 2023, and upon deliberation and voting on June 14th, the commission made the following determination. The commission finds that submitted application materials are consistent with the requirements set forth by the current Town of Monroe Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Regulations and the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Act pursuant to Sections 22A-36 and 22A-45 inclusive of the Connecticut General State statutes as amended. The applicant has presented an uncontradicted expert evidence that the activities as proposed in this application pose no adverse impact to the regulated areas, and that's up for vote.
Motion accept the draft resolution? I'll make the motion. The motion by Commissioner Hall, accept the draft resolution, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Lindstrom, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passing unanimously. And IWC R. I didn't want, I can't see.
My typo.
Okay.
So, all right, so, go ahead.
IWC-2023-01, file number 1437.
55.
Meadowbrook Road, gorgeous proposed remediation restoration plan a result of clearing disturbance of a wetland or water court.
So, Mr. Chairman, the applicant had submitted a restoration plan before you do clearing a disturbance of the wetlands in November of 2022, and the plan includes a new buffer and wetland plantings to be left in natural state with a split rail fence and wetland markers and new installation of 50-foot length of riprap in a previously disturbed drainage swale. Plans are in your packet, and this is a restoration application. That's what the R is for. The town engineer has also reviewed this as well as staff, and the only recommendation, and I guess it's up to the commission, would be maybe to reduce the amount of riprap to 25 feet, maybe like half it, but it's up to the commission, but that's the only comment from staff on this application. Proposing four inland wetland markers on a split rail fence that would help to delineate the wetland buffer area. We also have representatives to answer any questions that we have.
Have.
And you saw them in April, but I can pass them out again. You'd like to see them, yes.
To the record, James McMahon is certified professional soil scientist, gentleman consulting services, offices in Newtown, kind of pitch hitting tonight for Alan Sheppard from Hill Bay on this application. I did the wetland remediation and also beefed up the planting plan.
Here's some of the pictures if you'd like to look.
I'm that, I'm the, that's my planting plan. I want to put on to that little fallout box to the right-hand side, various plants, shrubs, and trees.
One where the neighbor of Elm Street identified it?
Pardon me?
This one where the neighbor of Elm Street identified it?
As far as letting us know that there was a violation?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't recall who the complaintant was at that time. It was in early November, I recall.
The list of the plantings.
Yes, it's, it's actually quite small, so I actually made a second copy to make it a little larger.
You have a report from May 15th?
It's on the, it's on the, the second sheet. It's, there's red maple, silky dogwood, red chokeberry, and spice bush, 37 plantings in all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I know, it's kind of hard to see.
My producer report, I don't know if you have this.
They do, yes.
That, my back same table is where my.
Oh, right, yes.
Right, so, okay. This is the one where I remember now, is that they thought maybe it was like a guy was setting up a contractor kind of thing in back there, right?
I think that the applicant just.
He dug out a swell and drain, like.
He was supposedly trying to clean it up. That was the, it wasn't, it wasn't, there were no zoning violations, to put it that way. There were no zoning violations were associated with it.
You know what the purposes of concrete pads are here?
No. We're, we're. I think he likes the, I think his main goal was to have a wood splitting area. So I think.
They were existing?
They were existing, right.
Right, so we didn't build those.
It's my understanding, talking to the engineer, that he uses the area to split a lot of wood. And also, I guess he was having, I don't know about flooding problems, but the ditched water course that he ditched again was filling in and not flowing very well. So he wanted to improve that. And he did.
Throw a plant.
Yeah, that's a demarcation with the signs on it. And then my plantings, the shrubs anyways, are going to be on the south side. Split rail fence, so you'll have the split rail fence, planted buffer, and quote the wetlands, ditched water courses.
Add modified rip, oh, I see what you're talking about. So your recommendation is, and the engineer's recommendation, that the length of riprap could be reduced?
It's, it could be, yes. It's, it could, it could stay, or it's kind of the commission, but it's 25 feet seems to be sufficient.
That's the line of the roof?
Right now, the only resource that's where he wants the riprap is the water.
There's a.
So he wants to line it.
He wants the riprap. The owner wants to put riprap.
Yes.
I think to stop erosion will probably help with.
There's a catch, the catch basin drains to that point, and that's where they want to start the riprap.
It is a pipe that discharged?
Pipe discharged, yeah.
This is my only concern is that it's already been, the ditch has been cleaned, right?
Yes.
It's already done.
Well, it was, yeah, the sediment was removed from it, then kind of left in a.
It's working out.
Yes, it was left in an unfinished state, so I think they're just looking to finish. Yes, but it is working now. That's correct. Better than it was, we put it down.
Did you go out there?
I have seen it. I haven't been out recently, but I guess I have seen it. Took the pictures.
I just, my always question is, the revenue is worse than the problem in a way, meaning like having to go and disturb it more to get and travel. Riprap in there, whereas it's already cleaned and it's working, you know, to where it was, you know, how long it's been here, I don't know. I know all of these houses, I know how old the pipe is, but.
Pipe looks old, whatever that means. It wasn't a new pipe.
But like, it's not like it's a new house. So, I don't know, sometimes, you know, more activity is worse than, you know, if it's already been cleared, you know, and then now that he's, everybody's aware, there'll be plantings, there'll be signs, if it needs to be maintained again, he just comes in, asks for permission to go in and maintain it again, instead of moving all, because you got, I assume you have to release some soils out in order to make room for the riprap, or else you're just clogging the waterway, right?
I don't know that answer, because.
Neither. I mean, but again, if he had a clear path, and it's partially done now, if you double chuck the riprap in there, you're just blocking the path again. In order for that riprap to be functional, it has to be down lower and create a valley.
Right.
Which means moving wetland soils and bringing a tractor and whatever type of equipment to move riprap, because shit's heavy and big. So I'm just wondering if it's more disturbance than is necessary.
Have you, have you been on this?
No, I haven't. I know this was, this is a.
That wouldn't be an issue, because it's essentially, you got lawn, you have the shed, you got the area where he splits his wood, you have uplands, disturbs upland soils, but they're there. And then you have a berm from his casting his material, and then you got the ditch. So you're driving uplands, and you'd be pausing it into the ditch for course.
Wait, what, say that last part again? You, what?
Driving on uplands, be on an upland area, won't be going into the wetlands to put the ditch. There's two ditches. There's one ditch that comes out of the town pipe, and goes in a sort of northwest direction, and then it hits the main water course along the back property line, which is also ditched. And that's where.
That's the placement on the right-hand side.
Huh?
That's the 10-foot drainage use.
Yes. Well, that's the one he splits. The other one is a, is a broke, which is also ditched, that's the property boundary and the neighboring line.
Well, the riprap is shown in the add modified riprap in the area where the, wait a second.
This is, I think this is a picture of.
Oh, these are both town, these are both town utility pipes? Because this one looks like, the one on the left is connected to the, the one on the right is an easement. How does he not have, oh, wait a second.
I'm confused.
I'm confused, because there's two drainage easements on either side.
Yes, but the only one that was in.
The one that we want to add the modified riprap to, it's not, what do you see here? I see street drain, street drain, connecting in a line, running alongside this guy's driveway, outletting right here.
Right.
Right? But, so why isn't, my question, why isn't that not in the drainage easement?
That's, that's a great question, but it kind of just is where it is, I guess.
No, it is what it is. I'm saying that the drainage easement on both sides of the guy's property, and the town pipe isn't even in it.
Well, I guess the one that he excavated out to help with drainage is next to my wetland boundary. The other one I never even noted. I mean, I haven't even seen it.
Not a pipe there, it's just an easement.
All right, well, I, I mean, I, again, I didn't even, I only delineated the.
That's why I thought, I thought this pipe was like a utility pipe coming off of the house or something.
No, no, it's a street drain.
Street drain, right.
That fills with sands from the road, so we dug them out to improve, to improve the flow.
So this is.
But he didn't get a permit to do it.
This is a significant amount of work.
So the engineer, our engineer reviewed it, and my recollection from our conversation is, you know, if you're going to remove sediment in the future, if you do have riprap on the, on the bottom, you know what, you know where to go to. It's kind of like where to stop. Whether he needs 50 feet or not is another question. Usually when you have discharge, you sometimes do have some kind of stone or riprap at that discharge point. How much is the question I would, I would suggest?
Right, usually it's a triangle, but I don't know what the condition of the, you know, it's not close enough detail of the grading here, but. Where's that picture? Just where, it's already got rock on its side. I can see where it's padded the crap. No, but I see it. Okay, so I have another question for that one.
Your is here. He can maybe elaborate on a few other things?
Sure.
James, any orders? I'm the owner of the property, 55 Meadowbrook Drive. So all I did, I was listen to your conversation, and the way you were talking, that's what I wanted to talk. You know, I'm not a good talker, but I'm going to make things simple. I think the way things are right now in the pipe, it looks more natural than do the riprap, because with the debris that comes from the street, it's going to build up again. He's going to take out a row many years. I've been in the house for 20-some years, I never touched the pipe, so he probably give me another 20 years without even touching that, that little opening from the pipe. My suggestion, I don't know, you guys know better than, than I do, I don't, you know, it's up to you guys. Just with the planting and the fence, without touching the, the little, the little thing that I cleaned from the street, from the catch basin, is a 12-inch pipe, cement pipe, who comes from the catch basin from the street, I think will be good, in my opinion. I don't know, you, you know, you guys got to decide on that. But I think, like he was saying, the more you disturb the thing, the worse it's going to get. You know, if, even, you know, I got to dig a little deeper to put the felt paper and the riprap, I think it's going to make it worse than what it is right now. It looks pretty natural the way it is right now. I don't know if you guys want to go take a look at it or.
So you, so you went in there, and you gained some relief.
I redid it.
Which was not a complete job, but you got some relief. You know, riprap has, you know, I know what riprap is good for, I also know what it's terrible for, because it also catches stuff, you know, sometimes, and kind of, you know, unless it's really like smoothed out well. But, but my other question I want to know, I don't think we can answer this, is that it looks like there's two catch basins. They don't show if that's all that's coming in there, because, you know, it kind of affects whether some riprap can be put in. If it's only these two, we don't know what the waters, what I'm saying, we don't know the watershed, but actually, it goes downhill across his property, goes from 584 to 582, and I can't see the grade line to the left. And it does, they don't show any more pipes going into those catch basins. But if that was like the outlet for a significant network of catch basins in town, you've got like a volume issue that, you know, maybe those warrant something, at least as a, as what they call, the, I forget the term, but it's like to stop the velocity of the water coming out of the pipe.
Dissipating.
Dissipating, dissipating. So, again, but not knowing what we're talking about. Yeah. Not knowing what we're talking, I mean, I see two catch basins, and I see that it's not collecting water from the, I want to be specific, the north side, because the north side's downhill, how much is coming in from the left side. As far as the, you know, as far as planting part of it, you know, that's, I think that's just all fine. I'm just concerned now, because I didn't quite realize that we were dealing with town, street water.
Okay.
You know, kind of got me thinking, that's all. As our new engineer looked into this at all?
Yes.
It's, uh.
James.
Yeah. James, you looked into this?
Yeah, so to the extent that I looked into this, I didn't evaluate the entirety of the watershed that's contributing to the area. But just to answer some, some questions that you had and things that you kind of quickly just discussed, I did notice that the pipe was outside of the easement area as well. Sometimes that happens when, during subdivisions, you know, and the developer just puts the pipe in the wrong spot, and then nobody catches it until we're looking at it now, years later. In terms of the, the logic with the riprap, I know we were talking about it, and the 50 feet seemed a little bit accepted, like excessive, especially in terms of additional disturbances within the wetlands. However, the, the concern would be continual erosion in that channel. So I could see why the property owner may want to do some form of protection there, which is why we recommended, you know, potentially, you know, reducing that down to about 25 feet. And the benefit of that is that gives, in the future, a hard stop for when there is sediment buildup in the future. It, you know what I mean? It's not open to interpretation from whoever's in the excavator to try to clean it. It's, no, you know, you can only go to that riprap, and you clear that out, and then put it back, and you're not really disturbing additional wetland soils, or going like too deep or anything like that. I hope that kind of answers your questions and thoughts.
It's a sunny area, or is it shady?
Shady.
It's shady.
Shady. I can't get anything to grow on it?
The shrubs will grow.
It's probably just all laid in with roots, because it's.
Yeah, I mean, if you will, the north side of the ditch that was excavated out, that's all wooded and not touched. The, I'm sorry, the south side, and the north side is where the activities take place, the splitting of the wood, the shed, the storing of equipment, you know, lawn equipment, things like that. So, and that's wooded too, but not as wooded as the wetland slash water courses on the south side of, of the excavated out ditch. That makes sense.
What if we just change, it's an idea, change it to a small plunge pool, that it could do with field rock from the area, right? So that the water's going to hit it, and it's going to dissipate, decelerate. And, you know, then he doesn't have to go through and just do all that disturbance, bring a machine in there, have a trax load of riprap dumped in his yard and all that. Just an idea.
I know I would not have a problem with that. Just keep in mind, the plunge pool, you know, you're looking at about, you know, out of a 15-inch pipe, you may be seven to 10 feet long from the end of the pipe, and the width is going to be probably more significant than that channel.
Well, so it doesn't have to be, I'm not saying he has to dig out a bigger space, but just line that area well, you know, so that, so that initially, the water coming out of the pipe isn't like scurrying, skirting up the dirt right there. Almost like, it's just much shorter, but allows it to kind of trickle out away instead of being a concentrate as well.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that if there was, you know, more of a depression at the end of the pipe, which would mean he'd have to dig down a little bit. I'm only talking, you know, six, six, eight inches, and then it'd end up creating a berm on the other side of it, so that that way it'll retain a little pond for a little while, lack of a better description, a little bit of standing water, so that it'll then drop the sediment there and slow the water down.
Yeah, that's, that might be, really, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be okay with helping them with something like that, if that's a condition that you want to do.
And Mr. Borges has no reject, objection to that? Whatever you guys think, that's what I, what I think. You can kind of work out the detail between the staff and the engineer and Mr. Borges?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would also think maybe we should maybe refer this to Public Works also, maybe?
I have James' comments for the next meeting. We can, we can add it to the agenda. So it's minor, the minor, you know, request. We could add it to the agenda on the 28th.
Maybe it's, maybe it's possible that Public Works would do that portion of it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
That would be fantastic.
Well, I mean, it's clearly, it's, you know, there's a bit of a discrepancy, if you want to call it, between, you know, the easement, and it's, it's not this guy's discharge from his property, it's from the street. So he's basically doing, if that was in the easement, the town would have been doing it, definitely, right? It's, that's what it's for, right? Absolutely. So we kind of have a misalignment on this easement. It's a public utility, really. It's not like it's a big job, but it'd be less, definitely easier for them, than I'm sure him.
Yeah, well, that would be grateful, you know, that would be a big help.
Okay, so we can discuss it with Public Works and have it on the agenda for the 28th, and we can discuss the modifications at that time?
And I think, yes, but he can go forward probably and do the fence and the plantings.
Okay.
Today, right?
Sure, but it's all part of one application. So we want to approve a plan that shows the whole thing.
So I can start cleaning up and.
We're going to bring it onto the agenda. This is, this is the receipt of the application. We decide at the next meeting.
Okay.
This is a determination.
Right.
The 28th of.
Uh, this one, this is a determination.
Yes, this is the first time you guys have seen it, besides it being a violation. Now this is the application to, to remediation application. So we can put it on the agenda for the 28th and, and have more discussion about it. Okay.
And you're gonna, when is the Public Works, when, how does that work?
So James works for the Public Works Department. I will talk with him tomorrow and, and discuss and see what Public Works, how we can work that out.
You hopefully know by the next meeting?
I would, we'll find out sooner than that, for sure. And hopefully have it all solidified before the next meeting.
Yeah, my objective is to have this kind of worked out well before the next meeting. This way, any revisions to any plans, hopefully we could have in time for the next meeting, you know what I mean? So, which would give Public Works about a week to make this determination. Hopefully give you guys about a week to make a quick modification to the plan, so that the, the commission has the final set of plans in front of them.
Okay, perfect.
So wait, are we now calling this a regular, we have to determine, right? We're going to make a determination on this. Do we?
Um, that's about, it's just receipt of application. I didn't know, I didn't think you guys were going to.
What I'm saying is that it's under hearing determinations. No, I'm sorry. No, it's regular.
Yeah, it's just regular.
I'm, I'm.
That's okay. It's all right.
Mind, I guess. All right, we're all set. Well, so this is all set.
Right. Next, next, we'll, we'll talk this week.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you were done. I thought you were done. You're done with them?
Yes.
I just want to say one more thing. Just before we leave tonight, you're good with the planting plan? We're just going to iron out some of the channel?
Everybody make, everybody respond, you know, ask the commission to have to respond. Guys, what do you think of?
I like the planting plan.
So I guess we're going to iron. So I guess we're going to iron out a few details, we'll come back on the 28th.
Yes, we'll talk this week.
And, 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 yeah, I'll let the engineer on our side, Alan at Shepherd, know what happened this evening and he can, I guess we'll follow up with you.
Absolutely.
See what's going on?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Great.
What is the mix of modification remains that don't blow out?
Department, 7 Fan Hill Road and.
I'll ask the previous owner to see if she could dig it up.
So Cheryl, you were there. What, give us a.
The, there's been encroachment, there's no, since there's no erosion controls, there's been encroachment into this, into this whole area back over here. Basically, a lot of this, where the green lines are, they've approached. There's storage, there's piles of material and trees broken. And the wetland flags are not, I didn't find one wetland flag when I was out there, so.
I have videos of wetland flags if you'd like to see. Also, what plan are you working off of? Am I asking?
It was in the file, this plan right here that shows what we, you know, limit of disturbance. And when, before construction or any kind of site work begins, standard conditions are that staff is supposed to be notified to come out and check the erosion controls prior to work starting, and I don't recall that being done, so.
Can we get this flagged and, you know, whoever wants to go and look it over?
Well, there's a way that could be done because the limit disturbance on the plan is part of the application that's approved. They can stake just the limited disturbance and that's where the silt fence goes. So they go out there, stake the limited disturbance and there's five things stuffed behind that stake. You know, now it has to be brought back in so that, and then they'll, then the engineers, the surveyors will, you know, certify that the limited disturbance is now restored. I guess that's the best word. So, I mean, flagging it doesn't really help because that just helped determine where the limited disturbance was going to be. Flagging, you know, if the limit disturbance is properly staked out, flags, you know, they're only sometimes just even just, you know, a little ribbon. And sometimes they deteriorate, fall off in a couple of years. So, that's probably the better, I think the better solution, right?
I would just make sure that the surveyor is the one that helps them stake out where the limit of disturbance is and not just.
Yeah, I don't know if it's been certified, it will, it will still get certified.
And then you conduct the office for reinspection and, right. And based on that, and again, this is just preliminary ideas, but there might have to be some kind of restoration plans associated with that.
Well, what we'll do is once we stake that, we'll see if there's anything that's out of place.
I would have Stephen prepare a report to say what has been removed and what the plan is to do a restoration plan.
See what it is. It's tough to know where you are on the site just because the property is so long.
For sure.
The buildings aren't quite oriented square with it.
Sure.
It's not, without having a reference point, it's definitely.
Exactly, exactly. It's true.
When was the approval?
It was.
February 24th, 2021.
Correct.
February 24th.
Do you need more time than the 28th?
Is it a five year?
No, we'll get out of it.
Yes. It expires on February 24th, 2026.
It's important. I think you should tell the chairman you'll be ready.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be ready. I'll get the guys out there in the next few days and we'll contact you. We should be ready before 28th.
And what is the, what is like the timelines that you project out for completing this? I mean, is this something you're trying to get accomplished right now? The whole entire thing, or is it?
We're trying to go full force. We're trying to get all the clearing done first, stumping, get all the rocks out of the way. We plan on chipping all the material on site and using it as berms on site and using all the rocks for a barrier for the wetlands. We have a huge pile of rock over there. I have some pictures that I could show you what we have started already. Wetland. If you take a look at the plan, we used to have a huge pile of material on site from years ago. We had to leave the material the way to start our work. I believe that is the picture she is referring to as J or I. You can modify the plan and incorporate those holders where you want to put them. And in terms of also the approval of storage containers there to be on cave services. I agree, but we need time to complete the pavement to be able to put in those containers or start the construction or the construction of the project. We are doing a lot of the construction work ourselves. We are in the business. We don't work it every single day, but we do work on weekends whenever we can get to it. We have catch basins that are purchased. They're already on site. I have pictures of that. We have pipe that is purchased. It's already on site. I have pictures of that. If we could get it done in a day, we would, but that's just not our, we weren't born that way, you know? We're trying to make it work.
You have three years to get it done, but you can't stay violated anytime.
My friend.
So. The holders you said you were going to put between the limited disturbance and the parking? There's a.
This is the actual planning. Discussing holders with me, but this is the original plan. This is the planning plan.
I don't think we had incorporated any holders in the plan. We expect to have them uncovered when we start digging. Something we could bring back to the commission as a modification.
And if it makes sense, it doesn't hurt. I don't see how it hurts, but. Right?
We'll proceed with the staking of the disturbance limits and then we'll do the touches.
That's good.
Would you like to keep that letter for your records?
Yes.
Yes, please.
I could give you another copy.
This is fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we're on to general discussion, decision of a civil jurisdictional ruling. 14 doors drive a proposed placement above ground pool.
Okay, I'm just going to pull this one out. On my papers. So, the applicants, the owner of the property came in to replace a 24-foot above-ground pool. You can see on the aerial with a 21-foot above-ground pool. And if you're looking at the aerial photography, the light purple is the GIS mapping of informational purposes in wetland soils. So, I saw that and wanted to do a little more digging because it looked very close to where the new pool would be, even though it was smaller. Back in 96, 97, the owners came in and got zoning approval to put that pool in. So zoning approved it. But at that time, the map that was brought in to get the permit, it just didn't happen to show the wetlands, so they got the zoning approval. And basically, when the house was built, on the second page of this, you can see that there was a conservation easement given and the house was built even with the wetlands zigzagging across the backyard. So there was some kind of a compromise given so that they could have a yard. Kind of like, a kind of like a little bit of a swap. You can, you can understand that.
When was that?
Um, the house was built. Uh, let's see, this was, this was like in the early 90s, 97? Yeah, and then they came in for the pool soon after that. So anyway, the staff wanted to give an agent approval just because they're putting it in the old, the same spot. There's no excavation and it's going to be a smaller pool. However, I wanted to bring it to you because it is on a wetland soil as per our maps. So I just wanted to have the commission take a look at it and say that they're comfortable with me issuing an agent approval to replace the above-ground pool with a smaller pool.
So from what side is the wood sign?
24 to 21. And it's just going on on the existing site. So it's not encroaching any further than it was. It's on a grassed area.
I want to ask the property owner a couple of questions about. On this pool now, is it still filled with water and stuff?
It's got, oh, I'm sorry, Jerry Stevens. It's got about eight inches of water in it. We came home from a little trip and the winter cover was crashed in. We took off the cover and it's got about eight inches of green water in it, yes.
So, but the, but it's a sand bottom underneath the liner, right?
Yes.
Have you had any like depressions in the, in that bottom? Has there been like, like a sinkhole underneath it at all?
Oh, no. Just, just our footprints when it was brand new, but that was it.
No, there's no.
Right, okay. It's just because this was once filled in wetlands apparently, maybe where that pool was. And I just want to, you know, know we're not going to have a problem that, you know, when they go to put the new one in, that they take it out and all of a sudden there's all this junk and now they want to. All right, no, that's it.
Yeah, I think, given the history, I think a replacement is.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So the next one is moving along, 85 Walnut Street. So I actually did give an agent approval for this one in March because they had a septic, like, emergency. And so the septic company had to go out there immediately and replace it. So I made them put erosion controls in and got a quick little planting plan to just restabilize it with an agent approval. But at that time, the owner had a sump pump that was discharging into the backyard, onto the grass, and wanted to pipe it underground and have it discharge closer to the wetland. And I said, you know, and we need plans for that, we need engineering and the whole nine yards. So the applicants did come in with that proposal and. This one right here.
So they had a septic permit issued, correct?
They had, they had, they had a failure.
Failure.
An emergency failure, emergency failure. So they, so the septic company had to go out there right away to fix it. And so, you know, we made sure the ground was stabilized as soon as that was over, erosion controls were in. And then, and that was taken care of. And then they wanted to discharge the sump pump underground and have it come out to have a dissipator and it's, they had the wetlands properly flagged. They're proposing a planting plan as well, which is on the left side of your plan. And engineering, town engineer has also looked at it as well. And they made modifications based on the engineer's, you know, comments. So I just wanted to show that to you. And I'm bringing it to you also because usually when I issue agent approvals, they don't have to do with any excavation particularly or that close to a wetland. So that's one of the reasons I'm bringing it to you. So if you are comfortable, again, I will issue an agent approval since the engineers already looked at it and they have a planting plan or if you'd like to have it come to the commission for an application.
I just want to know where's the replacement septic area?
Um.
So you said.
It was, it's right, you know where the, I'm sorry, can you see the deck? It's like right, right behind the deck. Yeah.
Is that orange?
It says lawn.
Callouts for the septic tank and the T-box.
Yeah, it does say septic. It's really small, but it says septic tank. Yeah, so it was right back there. They had erosion controls in and protected the wetland and then they just, you know, restabilize it.
Pump chamber in, ready pump chamber?
I think the pump is, was, sump pump is there and then they were planning to put in, they had the outlet already existing and then a new.
Pump chamber is downhill towards the wetland.
Right, so they're pumping it out and then they're going to daylight it near the wetland. Into a buffer area, right, right in front of the wetland and into the buffer area. But then propose a planting plan and inland wetland markers as well.
And I do believe the existing sump, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have the plan in front of me, but I do believe the existing sump pump did discharge into the wetlands. But that was a pipe that was just on the ground. So they're going to pull that back, so they are going to pull it a little further away from the wetlands. But, but they wanted to bury it.
So that they could have a yard, you know, not have a pipe crossing the yard.
Mm-hmm. So it's discharging at the edge of the wetlands?
Not in, not in the wetlands.
Never mind. The red, the green line is the wetlands, right?
Correct.
This planting in front of it is a buffer plant.
Correct. And then the, the three pink circles are the wetland markers. So we're creating a buffer for, so there's the lawn, then there's the markers, the buffer, and then there's the wetland.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So that's before you because there's excavation and drainage work. And usually when we do agent approvals, that's not part of that, more benign.
You don't usually get a nice plan like this either.
That's true. So anyway, if you're okay with it, I'll issue an agent approval. If you want to see it before the commission, let me know what you'd like to do.
What do you think?
I think she's good to go.
Very great.
She's got plenty of information.
It's already done though, right?
No, this work is not done. No, the septic, I gave an agent approval to, to restabilize after the septic work was done. That's it. This is, this is new and this is, this is just for the commission to let me know how you'd like to see this. Would you like to have the agent, have staff handle it, an agent approval perspective?
Do we vote on that?
You can vote on it, sure.
Well, you can't, it's not, can't hurt to have it.
Absolutely.
I'm making a motion for staff to handle it.
Motion from Commissioner Lynch from.
Second.
Second, if we're all, all in favor.
Aye, aye.
We can handle P5. I'll see regarding term issuance of general permits.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is going to be a little, little modification to this agenda. So the general permit part is not what we're discussing anymore. I can give you background on that if you want it, but it's not part of this. So I wanted to discuss with you very, very quickly about agent approvals in general so that we can cut down on having these, you know, rulings by you of what you want to see and what you don't want to see. In 2019, the commission, at their January 9th, 2019 meeting, clarified to staff what they want agent approvals to be, you know, what their jurisdiction is particularly. And they clarified what they considered to be non-significant activities as those that are within non-virgin or non-wooded areas previously developed and are approved disturbances like typically lawns or parking lots. And I just wanted further clarification on that regarding, so if there, like, again, if there's excavation, if there's drainage work, so for things that don't require excavation such as an above-ground pool, a shed, deck footings, things like that. That, just kind of clarification from the commission on what, you know, what you're comfortable with not seeing, if you understand what I'm, you know. Is it from a staff perspective, if there's not a lot of excavation in general and it's not very close to a wetland and it's on previously disturbed area like a grass, grassy area, then I would say it's in general an insignificant impact to the wetland or very minimal and very unlikely. So I just want to get confirmation from the commission on that.
Typically, right, we don't get, we don't allow much within 25 feet of wetland, right? You know, usually it's like anything significant.
Right, well, the upland review area is 100 feet, so anything in there.
Upper review, but generally don't like to see, like, if someone wants to build a new house or put in something, we always want to see like at least like nothing within 25 feet. So I would say anything within 25 feet of the actual line that's significant would, should come, I think should come here, right? So, but anywhere from the 25 to 100, right? Is open to, like you're saying, like if they're doing deck footings and they're 50 feet away, well, that's why you have to come here, you know, it's a minimal disturbance.
Right, for sure, for sure.
Septic repairs that are not with, they can't be within 25 feet of a wetland, I don't think. I think it's maybe 50. So even like a septic repair shouldn't have to come here. Unless it was like something that had a real serious situation.
So for something like the one with the pool.
The pool, yeah.
Would, would you have not wanted to see that? I guess it's a question, right?
The pool that we just saw?
Right.
I mean, I don't think, see how, all the disturbance is already done.
Correct, okay, so this is.
If it's, again, they're not doing, or like you said, earthwork.
Yeah, it's just a replacement.
And if someone's, right, it's just a replacement and they're going to put a little topsoil to make up the two-foot buffer that's, you know, now no longer sand and.
But that's within 25 feet of the wetland, so that's within 25 feet of the wetland, right? So.
It's like, it's like I can't work without the thing, but, and it also is existing. Like if somebody wanted to put a pool there.
That would be different.
That's a replacement. So even a replacement of anything, a shed. If a shed was there and it fell down, the guy wants to get permission to replace the shed. That is not, that's not new activity. It's a repair, a replacement. So those type of things, I think, also.
Okay, so if it's brand new and it's within 25 feet, even if it's a shed or above-ground pool, you would like even just to see it to make a determination? Does that make sense?
Anything that's new happening within 25 feet should be.
Is that, is that the consensus? Is that, okay, okay, okay. That's just, just.
It doesn't, you know, doesn't mean that something 50 feet away shouldn't cover either. It all depends on, you know.
Oh, for sure. Absolutely, yeah. Okay, okay. So that just cuts down on those kinds of things. Um, next thing on the agenda? Okay, so the Wolf Park improvements update. Um, let's see. So, I've been past those, I'm just holding on one actually. So, at Wolf Park, as you can recall, they're installing two fields. And one of the fields, there's an accessway that crosses the wetland at two points that the commission knows about. And it was approved through the commission. Let's see, I got to find my notes on it. Basically, in late April, early May, the contractor realized that the plans that were approved, the aggregate base was a little too small for, for where it was supposed to be placed because it, over time, it would, would push down and get, and you'll kind of get lost in the ground. So they wanted to have a larger aggregate. And during that time, the contractor brought in some material that wasn't, you know, something that maybe should have been there. And so the town had an LEP go out and just to make sure that everything was on the up and up and testing soil in about six to seven places. I think the testing was done June 1st. We're still waiting for the test results to come back on that. And just wanted to give you an update on that. Any questions, you can ask me.
When were you spit your paper?
Um, two days ago. Oh, yesterday, yesterday, yesterday.
They started removing it.
Yes.
That's what we're.
I thought no one saw them putting, I thought this was the putting in for us.
No, that's, this is, this is, this is yesterday, actually, I'm sorry. I thought it was Monday. It was yesterday. It was fabric and they rolled it up and took it out.
Right, so there was black fabric under all of it?
That's my understanding. Soli was on site monitoring it.
The thing that was what the plan's called.
Mm-hmm, and.
That's weird because then it's really.
Yeah. So, so we're waiting for the test results to come back and we'll see what happens. And I'm sure we'll have them by the next meeting. And if there's anything, you know, that comes up in the meantime, I'll have a staff report on that.
I got a couple of comments. One is that, that's what that fabric does. Fabric allows that the aggregate stays at the top and doesn't mix in. It's almost like making a snowshoe, right? So it's a woven textile fabric. And then it spreads out the ground pressure so that it doesn't sink in. But I just want to make a comment to everybody because we just heard from Cheryl what someone has said about the size of the aggregate. And I don't know how many of you guys know this, but I did the walkthrough. I was going to bid on the project. I couldn't. My company didn't have the means to bid on a project that size. So when I was there, there was a ton of large companies that do big work all over. Dalling was there, can't remember some of the other ones that were there, but faces I've seen before in other projects. Like, there was 200 years of experience easily right there, okay? And as far as I know, nobody questioned the size of the material that was, that was specked out by TPA for that path. So just want to, just want to state that because I've been hearing some craziness kind of in a way. But they, when they, when they came in and approved this plan, gave us this plan that we approved as wetland as commissioned. No, so the engineers who are, you know, registered engineers and have a lot of experience doing all sorts of stuff. Then all these contractors came out and not one of them called out that that stuff was too small for the project. That's, that's all. And it doesn't defend the town.
So the winning contractor then is the one who decided the aggregate was not large enough?
As far as, right?
That's my understanding.
The understanding is he chose to use a bigger product that wasn't the spec. It wasn't a virgin rock material. It was a bunch of crushed up brick, asphalt, metal, rock, plastic, whatever. There was a whole bunch of different stuff in there, right? You saw it. So they used that, which had a life of, we don't know, previously, like whenever, in memory, you said that discussion.
For sure.
How long that stuff has been somewhere else absorbing this or that where the DOT spec material would have been like literally two weeks old at the most coming from a quarry.
Right.
And said, there was, no one brought up any problem with that. Either the commissions, the town engineers that approved, that looked it all over, you know, TPA that designed it and all the contractors were with, you know, all this experience. None of them said this is going to be an issue. So this one, you know, in the town.
Did they bring in what they said they were going to bring in?
No.
They haven't, the pictures that you see are how it is and it's going to stay that way until we get our test results back.
Right. This material that was not the correct size, is that what was specified incorrectly?
So somebody brought in the wrong material? Wrong material. They didn't, they didn't follow the contract that they had.
Right, so what's the recourse on that? I mean, is that mean they've broken our contract and we should look for a new contractor?
They're, like, the town is, is dealing with that.
Okay, as long as they're, it's being addressed.
We've been having meetings on site and that's, that's one of the meetings yesterday. We met on site with the head of Parks and Rec, Soli was there, our town engineer was there, Public Works, and the economic development head was there as well. We walked the site and with, with the contractor. That's, that's the result.
I mean, is this, is this something that we have to like kick back and start the approval process again? Because make sure they're actually doing what they say and.
Well, Soli, Soli's on site. They're also doing weekly inspection reports and they're in close contact with the contractor as well as, as us. And, and he understands that that path is going to just stay the way it is until, until we get results back from the LEP. And the testing should come back. It's been about 10 days. We should get the results back hopefully the end of this week.
How did they test?
What?
How did they test?
I think six to seven, don't quote me on the number, but I think six to seven spots up and down the path into the soil.
Down the road or something?
Yes, to see if there was any permeation.
Where did the material go?
Uh, the contractor said, you tell. That's, that's.
It's not, it's no longer in the ground.
Correct. That's what, that's what, that is what the contractor. That is what the contractor told me. That's what I can tell you.
Confirmation on that? Like, I could tell you whatever he wants, but that doesn't mean it's accurate.
That's what I was told by the contractor. If you'd like confirmation, I'm happy to get it.
I mean.
The only place he could have brought it, look, there's other, there's places that you could use that. It's not the wetlands, right? You could use it under a private parking lot if you want. You know, there's, that's acceptable in other places. That's why he has, someone has a pile of it somewhere. They bring it, but not through, you know, a wetland, you know, forget about it. Plus, not only that, it's not like this is a private person that hired him to build a little parking lot. They just built me a parking lot. This is a spec that has DOT spec materials in it. That is what was approved and which all the other bidders bid against, you know, bid for. So it's a breach of contract.
That's why, that's why I brought that up before because it's. That's why, that's why I brought that up before, because it sounds like he's trying to pull fast forward.
If you tell me that they're doing their part, then it wasn't.
I have been in close contact with many people from the departments of the town in Monroe.
And there's, there had to be, there was no, apparently, there was no submittal process to submit all your purchases to someone and say, yeah, this is the check that it was what's on the thing.
You just think a failure in town process.
Failure somewhere, and, you know, I'm not gonna make that determination, but.
We appreciate being kept up to date, but if no action is required, that's.
I would like to keep you up to date on it and going forward and let you know what the test results are.
It's a good thing I see, too, is that I don't see. Okay, so this is one other thing, just bring it up.
Yep.
I don't remember specifically, but there's, somewhere in here is a trench with the two conduits.
The wetland crossing, you mean?
No, we found the whole entire thing, there's two conduits that are supposed to be in there and I believe it's supposed to be bedded with something. So. For future water and future electric.
That's right.
So, my question is, since what I was told was that someone came out and saw the trees were cleared, the next time that person came out, the path was in, nobody's put eyes on the conduit.
So, you wanna know where the conduit is? Is that, that's.
First of all, yeah, you gotta confirm it was installed.
Right.
You gotta confirm that was the right pipe, the right size and the right, I think it was scheduled forty-six inch. And that it was backfilled properly with whatever the town required, you know, required on the plan.
Right.
So, you know, I don't see any sign of like a gray sand that came from pipe covers on, not that, not that it means it's not there. Just that, you know, that's what I'm.
Good verification.
It needs to be verified.
Yeah, and again, the engineer is gonna sign off on the project at completion and, you know, as built and everything for all those things, that will be, that will be good.
It'd be nice on the high. So, if you don't mind answering that, what's the process for them to go through to get the cease and desist lifted?
We're gonna cease and desist the town, it's just, the town's working through the process of getting it resolved.
Because I wouldn't feel comfortable with them moving forward until, like, we got assurances that they are doing this right. So, like, well, how.
I think when this happened, I think those, I think the, what do you call it, those things, processes were put in place or going forward. And after this, all they've been doing is screening topsoil and leveling the field and.
Correct, correct.
They're not doing any more of this significant wetland stuff.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure we're aware when.
No, we didn't wanna keep them from continuing progress, just didn't wanna like, just fly.
Right.
And they are continuing progress in the back, so.
Just in the other parts, not on.
Correct, they're not, they're not.
And that's fine, but before we move forward on this, we all wanna have assurances that they're doing it right. And I mean, we're doing the testing and all that stuff, but.
Right.
Who's the contractor?
Maggie.
Local. All right, so. Find out. Obviously, that just means if there's something that comes back, then we have to fix whatever that is.
Correct, and whenever I find out, I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, minutes. No minutes.
Minutes, okay.
Regulation Amendment Committee, do you even?
Minutes.
Then, Public Garage Committee. Anything else?
Do you have to discuss?
Oh, yeah. Heard you're paying more than?
Yeah. It will no longer be a little better than after July.
Wow, I didn't know that. Is that always the plan or is that just the way it happened?
It's the way it happened.
Oh, okay.
The buyer of the house, the.
The challenge is.
That's, I don't say anything to the crowd of your best. That's the challenge.
This is your last meeting. No, July, July, June.
It is on the fourth.
July fourth.
July fourth.
So, June, the June twenty-eighth meeting?
June twenty-eighth he's gonna be.
June twenty.
The next meeting.
You're for June twenty eighth.
And then, whatever.
Said July twelfth.
The meeting is scheduled on.
Well, I think.
If you can't do the twelfth, that doesn't mean we can't do the twelfth, unless there's nothing on the agenda for the twelfth.
Nothing is scheduled for the twelfth, the only, the only meeting that's scheduled for July right now is July twenty-sixth.
Right, so we were discussing the twelfth as an option, but they said that didn't work, which is why we are going down this other path of the twenty-eighth, just to have a, right, continue.
The next meeting.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, I think.
Unless we're signed, it'll be the twelfth.
Is he answering?
What abouts?
Lake region, kind of called Belmont.
I have a friend who has a house up in Conway out there. That's why I can't be here for the next meeting, according to the answer.
Oh, for.
With Mark.
All right, wow, okay, so. Sorry for my delay to close this meeting.
More to the adjournment.
Second, Commissioner Lynchstrom, second, Commissioner Hall, fair.
Aye.
All right. Meeting is closed at eight forty-two PM.